I'd like to call to order Monday, May 4th, 2015, 5:00 PM, the work session. And Councilman Stipp will not be attending this evening, and Councilman Osborne is going to be late. So, we only have, we're gonna go ahead anyway. We only have one item on the work session. So, council will receive information and discuss the estimated fiscal year 2015-16 draft budget. Lori Wigan-Roth, Budget Research Manager, to present. Lori?
And Mayor members of the council.
I'm sorry. You came up, excuse me, the city manager came up to me and told me this. And, of course, I immediately forgot. Yes. I know. So, our city manager is going to introduce this.
It's that lasting impression that I'm making.
Yeah. You know, that's a long time for me to remember, so.
We hold on to each word.
That's right. If we could get the queued up, the presentation, please? There we go. Thank you.
So, Brian Dawkey, our city manager, to present.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Is that the clicker? Yes. Control my own destiny now. But tonight, we're looking forward to bringing this before council, recommending a balanced budget. And as you know, it's been a lot of work, and I'll go through a little bit of the work that has got us to this point. But tonight is really a overview of the process and talk a little bit about what we did from a staff management perspective, as well as working with the council very closely in work sessions. I will highlight some of the items funded that we recommend in this budget. And then, the details will really be talked about by our Budget and Research Manager, Lori Wigan-Roth, so that you'll get additional detail at that point. So, always as a reminder, we like to start off with the process calendar. You'll see that this actually takes us back to October 27th, when we did the five-year revenue forecast with council. And you can see there's been consistent and regular interaction with the council along the way. And tonight, in the bottom line item, May 4th, our draft budget review. And this, but what I would like to say is each of you as council have spent 20 hours in these meetings that are referenced up there on this side. So, that's 20 hours of meetings where you received presentations, you've asked a lot of questions, you've given a lot of direction, and it's, and that is really what's helped us and enabled us to get to this point. So, the recommended budget is all-inclusive, the inputs and insights that you have shared. So, you'll see it's a direct correlation with that as we go through. So, thank you very much for the feedback. It really has gotten us to this point. Now, looking ahead, we have the Public Budget Forum. That's coming Wednesday, and that is at 6:00 PM. It'll be held right here. And that has been advertised extensively through, I say advertised, but communicated in various venues to try and get the word out. As always, you never know how much of the public will be attending, but we always want to offer that up as an opportunity for our public to show up, learn more about the budget, and certainly be able to ask some questions. So, at that meeting, we'll actually talk about the proposed budget accomplishments. We'll get into some of the department efficiencies as well. And then, you'll notice on here, on the second date, May 11th, if council would like an additional budget review for this draft budget, we can do it next Monday. So, we've set that time aside if there is an interest on the part of council. So, that's, otherwise, we go right to May the 18th, and that's when we go for the tenet of budget adoption. And as you recall, that's where you set the upper expenditure limitations. And so, at that point, when that's adopted, we cannot raise the budget maximum amount. So, that sets that ceiling. And then, June 22nd, we'll get the final budget adoption, leading up to the property tax levy. So, overview so far of the process. There, I want to share some highlights as we go through this. Lot of, obviously, a lot of work behind the scenes, and even in front of the scenes as we go through this. So, some of the things I want to cover with you is, and we talked about it briefly before, we really spent a lot of time on the base budget. And our finance staff, budget staff, works with our directors, works with the deputy city manager's management. And I would just tell you that we always expect departments to spend less than their budgets. We work hard to control the costs. Our departments have worked very hard to control the costs as well. But at the same time, a budget is set to allow flexibility as different needs may arise, so we can address challenges as we go through the budget. It's monitored throughout the year. It, and we, in working with the departments, we can work through things like absorbing unexpected costs. So, for example, if development really picks up, we're able to hire consultants to help out with some of the high workload volumes. So, we can do things like that. If we have water line breaks, it's how we can fund improved, excuse me, improve processes to save time. That's in working with our department heads. We will fund improvements like the remediated water line that we have from the ballpark that reduce costs over time. And so, we use the cost savings from these things I just talked about to cover costs elsewhere. For example, fuel savings have gone down this year, but our utility rate increases have gone up. So, the point of that is you always have to have some flexibility within the budget, and that's, that allows us to do that. On the supplemental and capital improvement plan requests and reviews, we've talked about it before, and we're going to continue this, but there's an increasing level of review of department budget requests when they come through with their CIP requests. And as part of that, we actively are looking at the quality of the CIP project estimates by having both engineering and the budget office review, meet with the departments, ask the questions, and drilling into those cost estimates. So, we, it not only does that, but it allows us to look at what the scope of that project is, and to make sure that we've looked at it from a few different vantage points to determine if all the costs were considered, because that is very important when we come forward and put it in the CIP, that our costs, we can stand behind those. We know that it's, it has been a work in progress in previous years. We know we're continuing to improve on that, and you'll see that in next year's budget cycle as well. On the staff side, we'll be having a new system, as we've talked about ERP, Enterprise Resource Plan. So, with that new system, it may look and feel a little bit different, but the same amount of time will go into it, but expected it may look a little bit different for you next year. So, highlights, and we've talked about this, and I just want to really acknowledge and appreciate council for what you did this past, this current budget year in setting aside seed money for the asset management. It's, really addresses ongoing requirements to retain and replace existing equipment facilities. And I would tell you that that is something that a lot of cities aren't in a position to be able to do. You know, it's easy to spend money on other things, but the steps you're taking today are going to keep costs controlled for the future by taking care of our assets today, as well as not put the burden on future councils. So, I truly want to recognize you for that. So, our, where we're at with the asset management, the finance departments worked with the departments.
Brian, can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Just a quick, just a quick note on your highlights. I also think it's just as important to kind of highlight that this is the fourth year in a row for our set aside on the, on the principal payment for the ballpark. To me, four years running, I know we had a plan four years ago, but the fact that we've been able to meet it four, and we intend on meeting it till that principle, to me, that there's a lot of cities that wouldn't be able to do that either. So, I think that's something is, you know, that's as proud of these other, and I agree with all the other things you have listed there as well, so.
Vice Mayor, thank you. That is, it was very important, and each year, we increase that amount as it goes forward, but thank you for that observation. The other, so, we've gone through, we've got a lot of plans in place for the tenure replacement for the asset management plan. So, we are going to continue working there, and we will have invested nearly $12 million into this program, which will be included in this year's budget as well. Lori will talk about some of the details later. The other one, investing employees. Council's been very supportive of staff, obviously, and the interest of council has been to try and keep our employees at market. And that's one of the things that we base our presentations and our salary increases on, is trying to get our employees up to market. And you'll see that, and we continue with that direction from council. But in addition to the compensation part, we're investing in training and technology, which is very important, by giving the employees the tools that they need to go forward. And the other part, and when you talk about investing employees, very proud of the culture that we're creating here as a team, and it really is valuing and empowering our employees to do, to strive and to do additional customer service, additional efficiencies as well. Prepare for development is the next bullet on there. We had some good news this past month, where we are increasing our housing permits, so starting to see uptick on that. And so, they're climbing. The proposed budget does include $500,000 for temporary staffing. Now, we hit a downturn with permits. We will not go forward with some of the temporary consulting help that we might need to level out the workload, but we're expecting that it will happen, and every indication that we'll see that. For economic development, there's $125,000 that we're including for ongoing funding for the initiatives to really help the, or enable the program to accomplish what the goals of the strategic focus on success strategic action plan. And that is very, very important, and we appreciate council's support of that. Also, about $400,000 in one-time funding as well for economic development, as well as a mid-decade census that we're doing as well. And mid-decade census, as we've shared before, and we'll give council updates before too long, but that's one where we're continuing to go forward with that, and where the census process, the mid-decade census process is underway. We'd want to talk about the positions. You'll see them up there. We're requesting four total positions in the budget. Lori will outline those later. One and a quarter of those four positions are in general fund, the rest are in enterprise fund. So, that's important to point out as well. But I did want to just hit some of the highlights, take a few minutes, talk about some of the philosophies and approach to this, and it's my privilege to hand this over to Lori, unless there are any other questions.
Any questions? All right, Lori, you have the floor.
What I'd like to do is, I'll start with going, we'll just kind of walk through the budget process again, in terms of the revenue, the expenditures, the CIP, those types of assumptions. I want to let you know, as we go through this, the one thing that's not in the budget that you're going to be seeing right now are the carryovers, where we are, well, departments will identify items such as perhaps a CIP project where the construction contract's been awarded, but the work is still progressing, and they need to carry over the funds out of this year's budget into next year's budget, so they can continue to make the payments against those projects. Those items are not reflected, and I'll kind of point out throughout where those things might pop up as we move forward through the next process. Again, you've seen this chart before, but this is basically the look at the citywide revenue. We're looking at $166.6 million. In this chart, you can see that about, almost half is the general fund. The balance is the enterprise funds, the capital funds, such as the impact fees, and the one contingency we establish for, in case something like development were to continue to grow at a quicker rate than we've prepared for in the budget. If those kinds of resources start coming in, having that appropriation gives us the ability to take those resources and actually use them to stay ahead, rather than start falling behind. Going a little bit more detail about the general fund. Again, the general fund, as you look at this chart, well over 50% of the general fund is supported by our local sales taxes, when you include the non-construction and the construction sales tax. Another large portion comes from our state shared revenues. The little pieces, development-related revenue is, that's a piece that's volatile. We're conservative in that area. And then, the property taxes based on the assessed valuations. Kind of walk through, or one thing I missed on this slide, the other resources that support the general fund, there's about $2.8 million in transfers from the enterprise funds to basically pay their share of the costs of the kind of the administrative departments that are funded in the general fund. And then, at this point in time, before carryovers, we're estimating a $26.1 million ending fund balance, which becomes available to fund next year's budget. That ending fund balance, or that beginning fund balance, we've talked a little bit about before, but about $6.9 million is from last year, last year's budget finishing better than we expected. Another $2.9 million is from, this year's revenues are expected to be higher than we budgeted, although the construction sales tax will be down about .9 million. The contingency will roll over, it's $16.3 million. We expect ongoing expenditures to be about $2.2 million lower this year, so that will fall to next year's beginning balance. And then, there'll be about a $1.3 million reduction related to some one-time items and accounting for developer deposits that are part of that balance that we have to set aside to assure that they're available when that developer project moves forward. And then, in this slide, what's not reflected in the general fund is $150,000 in towing. If you look at the last slide, that towing number was included in the general fund. It's such a small number, it kind of moves around every once in a while. In terms of the revenue, we haven't talked about the revenue in detail recently. I'll go over the property tax in a couple of slides. Sales tax, just to give you an update on where we are. The sales tax here, combined sales tax and the franchise fees, again, you're seeing what looks like it's a 10% growth rate from budget to budget. It's important to note that last year, we finished with sales tax higher than what was estimated. In fact, the sales tax was only about 2%. Last year's actual sales taxes were about 2% lower than this year's budgeted sales taxes. So, we were already knew that this year's estimate would need to move up on sales tax, and so on and so forth. If you compare next year's budgeted sales tax to this year's estimate for sales tax, it's a 4.9% growth, so we're only expecting real growth of about 4.9% when you look at where we are today. And through nine months of this year, it does, sales tax is, our local sales tax is trending where we had expected. It's at about 78.4% of our budgeted level. The next items on there, the urban revenue sharing is the state shared income tax. That's a known number, so we often get it right, or off with just $10,000 or something like that. So, it's a given number, it's in the state budget. The auto lieu tax, or the vehicle license tax, and the state shared sales tax are numbers that are provided by others. And just to give you a sense, again, through the first nine months of this year's, those are both trending very close to this year's budget or this year's estimate, so it appears that we're on track to meet those. The development-related revenues, you'll see that actually through this year, they've performed in kind of back and forth this year. The planning revenues have been up, and then, building revenues have been, inspection-type revenues have been down. They've kind of been flip-flopping throughout the year in terms of how those revenues have been coming in. Through nine months this year, we are at 75% of our budget, so it appears that we're in the right place in terms of the revenue for those. We do budget those conservatively, as I've mentioned before, so you'll notice that for next year, we've dropped the revenue estimate. Again, we want to be, we don't want to end up having, being overly aggressive and not have, and have our revenues come in under what we've budgeted for expenditures. And this is the area where we need the flexibility should development take off. And then, the last category of other in the ongoing portion, it is higher than, next year's higher than this year's budget. There's just a couple of items in there that we know are coming up. One is the developer contribution towards the Canyon Trails and Yuma Boulevard traffic signal that has been included in the CIP. There's also some adjustments associated with the services that the general government, primarily parks, provides the community facilities districts. We've aligned the revenue and expenditures more closely in the, in next year's budget. And then, the one-time construction sales tax, at nine months, is actually, it is trending to where it should, you know, I shouldn't say should, it's very volatile, but it is trending slightly above our estimate right now, so it appears that we will be able to achieve the estimate and won't have to drop that again, or don't expect that it'll finish below the estimate for this year. And again, consistent with what we did with development revenues, we've reduced the estimate for construction sales taxes, just based on being conservative and looking towards what's moving forward. In terms of property tax, just one more, a quick look again at the levies. Again, we're holding the property, the combined property tax rate at $1.87 per $100 of assessed valuation, and our levy will go up as a result of that. Next slide will show you kind of the increase in the levy and where the, where the pieces of that increase come from. We'll start with the current year levy, and then, the, in the primary property tax, there's a 2% growth allowed in the levy, and that's that $153,000. And then, new construction is another area where we gain assessed, or where we gain property tax levies. And so, for both the primary and secondary, we're bringing in about $362,000 more in next year's levy associated with new construction. The total, the combined levies are going up about 4.9% from this year's budget to next year's, but next year's proposal. And basically, there's a 3% increase associated with new construction, and a 1.9% increase associated with the existing properties.
I thought this was very helpful, the way you set this up. Did you find this on the property tax levy? I think the public will also appreciate this.
Thank you. This chart, the numbers are actually, the total number is the same as in your handout, the materials you saved in advance, but the distribution has changed slightly, and I'll explain why. Essentially, this was, we're going, we're trying to explain what has happened in terms of new or ongoing resources. One of our financial policies is that we will make sure that we aren't funding ongoing costs with one-time resources. So, what we did is we tried to isolate the ongoing resources, or the net increase in ongoing resources associated with preparing next year's budget. And we did that by essentially looking at this year's ongoing resources compared to this year's ongoing expenditures, and said, you know, based on that estimate, the new estimates, we're going to have more ongoing resources than we have ongoing expenditures. And that's about $5.2 million. And then, excuse me, that's about $2.6 million. And then, we looked at the increase from this year's ongoing revenues to next year's ongoing revenues. So, what are the incremental increases in new ongoing, or in ongoing revenues? And that was about, excuse me, $5.2 million. So, we've identified that there's $7.8 million in ongoing resources that could be used to add ongoing costs. And what this chart is showing you, that we're using about $4.2 million of those kind of new ongoing resources to pay for ongoing costs. And then, the balance of that is being used to pay for one-time costs. And as the vice mayor noted, part of that $3.6 million that you see there of kind of one-time, part of that is that $2.7 million that that pick set aside is at in FY16. And just to let you know why this chart changed from what you received, when we did the comparison of FY15 expenditures to FY16, we determined that there were mistakenly some one-time expenses included in the FY16 number, or excuse me, the FY15 number. So, we had to pull those out, and that, that accounts for why the numbers swapped. If there's no questions or comments on the revenue side, we'll move forward. Okay. And again, this is another area where I'll stress a couple times that we don't have carryovers reflected, and as we move through this chart, I'll kind of point out a couple spots where, or point out how that might impact things as we move forward. And one thing I didn't remind you of, the revenue, in your materials that were included with the report, there was an item, Schedule II, that has the more detailed information on the revenue I just went over. You also have in your materials a Schedule III, and a schedule, it was, no, it was included with this year, with today's, or today's materials.
Oh, it's here. Oh.
So, the Schedule III that's in there, it has basically department budgets by category of expenditure and by their divisions.
It's Schedule III, right?
That's Schedule III.
If you made the print any littler, I couldn't read it, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. We're trying to get it ready to actually be in the budget book, and that's one of the requirements of the Government Finance Officers Association, that we show that, show the history.
Oh.
And then, the other item that was with your materials is the, or with your, with the, online materials, is the Schedule XI. And that schedule details the supplementals that are included in the proposed budget. It breaks them down. This time, we're presenting them to you by department, so you can see how each department's impacted, and it's also by breaking them down into one-time and ongoing supplementals. So, the budgets that you see here.
Just for clarification, on the non-departmental and the reserves, could you just kind of expand on what those differences are and why they changed? Looks like significant, at least on the reserves, from '15 to '16.
Okay. And that's one of the areas where carryovers are going to come into play a little bit later on, but I'll skip down to there. The non-departmental, the reason that next year is lower than this year is, one of the main reasons is there's like about a 1.5, or one, excuse me, $1.3 million item in there that's related to job credits. That's an amount of money that's set aside for job credits that we've commit, that we're committed to in future in development agreements or other agreements. That amount will carry over from last, from this year to next year, so when we go forward, you're going to see next year's number go up by about 1.3 million, so those numbers will become very similar as a result. The thing with the reserves, in the FY15 budget column, that includes the $5 million set aside, or the $5 million that you set aside for asset management, as well as the fleet reserve, the IT reserve, and the risk reserve amounts that were, that were planned in this year's budget. What's showing in next year's proposed budget are just the items that we said we would use a reserve system for on asset management. So, it includes the $2 million for the fleet, the $1 million for the technology hardware, and then, the one point, I think it's 1.138 million for the new parks-related, excuse me, reserves for Right-Away and Parks Facilities and Parks Rolling Stock. So, that, that's what's in those items.
Lori? So, is the three-month operating expenses also in that reserve?
No. The three, the contingency is in a separate line item.
Line item. So, this is just the reserves that we have set aside?
Correct. This is just, what you're seeing on this chart is the department's operating budgets, the reserves, and the, you're not, and then, we'll see the CIP and other types of expenditures later, but it does not include the approximately $16.3 million contingency. In general, there's a couple departments where you may see that the numbers change from year to year. What is in these numbers are the supplementals that are being proposed or recommended on both sides, and, but carryovers are present in the FY15 budget, but they are not present in the FY16 budget. So, in some cases, these numbers will go up, you know, the, you know, the current, the current year will go down, and next year will go up as a result of carryovers. And then, in a couple instances, there's things like there were larger one-time supplementals in one year or the other. And then, here are your non-general fund departments and their budgets. A couple of these also are an area where you see some variation in the numbers. Just to give you an example, the HERF, the streets funding, you'll see that this year's budget is about nine, or about $900,000 higher than next year. There was $1 million in one-time supplementals in this year for that particular program. That is not being, they were not receiving $1 million in one-time supplementals in the new year budget. In the water area, the $5.6 million current year budget goes up to a $7.2 million base budget. There's a large part of that, 1.2 million was a technical error in preparing the FY15 budget related to the CIP water. You've acted on a couple budget transfers to rectify that situation, as well as to allocate the new revenues from the fee increase that went into effect for water in January to that purpose as well. Otherwise, there are additional supplementals and those types of things involved in that particular program.
Just for clarification, that means that the actual number, the 5.6, is going to come in higher when the actuals are totaled by about 1.2 million?
Correct. This is reflecting the original budget, so we could compare original budget to original As Brian mentioned, kind of give you a little bit of details on the position. As Brian mentioned, kind of give you a little bit of details on the positions that are being added or recommended in this budget. The police department is, we're adding a body camera program, and there is a records clerk that's required to deal with the records requests that are anticipated with that, with the introduction of that program. There's a recommendation to re, to reestablish the public works director position. That position will be established in the water fund, but it will be funded through the water, wastewater sanitation and general funds, because that particular department has all of those areas of, it has programs in all of those areas of responsibility. The general fund areas in that department are the fleet and facility programs. Then there's two sanitation positions. One is the conversion of a temporary, an existing temporary use of staff to a full-time city employee. And again, if, I think we all recall that they talked a lot about the efficiencies that comes along with having a trained city employee as opposed to temporary employees that, we get them trained, and they're, just when they get efficient, we end up having to hire somebody new to replace them. And then there is also a sanitation worker position. We are, through our contract for the trash collection, we, or garbage collection, we're required in July of '16 to take responsibility for the containers part of the program. This will, we will be adding a position late, later in the fiscal year to start bringing us up to speed to take, to get that program up and running, so that we aren't just scrambling on July 1, trying to figure out how we go pick up, replace broken cans or something like that. So this is some of the startup costs and the position that will be needed to run that program on a long-term basis. And just, by way, just to give you some background also on the positions, I forgot to mention, we haven't shared with you the, the, the count of full-time city employees to the, per hundred, per thousand population in a while. So I just thought I'd let you know that we peaked at about 9.71 employees per thousand population in fiscal year '08. With what we're proposing for FY16 with these four positions added, we'll be at 6.91 full-time positions per a hundred, per thousand population. In this year's budget, we're at 7.18.
Yeah, I appreciate you mentioning that, because I went back on some of the backup that you have, and I know we were at 597, or somewhere that was sitting at the, at the high that was authorized, but even what was funded in that year, if I'm not mistaken, it was the 910 budget. We're currently only about five positions funded higher than that six years later, and that includes about 20-some positions for the ballpark. So when you think about it from, we're growing, our costs are going up, fixed costs are going up, but the actual employees are comparable, are less than actually comparable to what was funded six years ago. So I, I think that's something you may want to highlight, I don't know where, but as this budget process moves forward.
From Brian.
Because I think, number one, from an efficiency measuring standpoint, I, you know, I, I think that's a really great measurement to kind of compare the two, because when I looked at, I says, four or five more, and that's not including the 20 from the ballpark, and that's six years ago, that was actually funded. So again, to me, that's, that's kudos to the staff of what you've been able to pull off over the last six years, and that's something that I think that's worth celebrating and put a focus on.
Thank you. Councilor Loretta.
And I'd just add to that, when you do that, is put our current population there, too, because I think people don't realize that when you say per thousand, but when you see the numbers, then it really even highlights it further.
From that peak in FY08, our population was about 56,000, and we're projecting about little less than 77,000 for next year. So that's about a 37% increase in the population. The positions count in that year was 544, and we'll be at 531 next year. So that's about a 2.4% decline in the number of positions over that same time period.
And I think that's important to, to highlight that.
Those are good facts, really, they are. Those, those are meaningful to people.
Right.
Very good. Thank you.
Kind of just walk through a little bit more details and the highlights from the supplementals. Again, that Schedule XI has all of the items that are being recommended as supplementals. It doesn't go into all the details on the asset management. As a reminder, asset management, there's $4.4 million associated with the fleet, technology hardware, and parks reserves that we've established based on their 10-year plans for what their replacement requirements are, or repair, repair maintenance requirements are. In addition, there's $3.7 million being allocated next year for catching up on some of the backlog of parks right-of-way and parks facilities maintenance. So that's a tremendous amount of money. We, I kind of acknowledged when we recommended this that it's important to, we're recommending that that's part of what that $5 million you set aside is going for, is to catch up on those. We recognize that it's a big task that we're asking the parks department to do, and it's possible that some of those funds will have to carry over into F, the next fiscal year, but they are, they're eager to try to get as much done as they can next year. The, in addition, there's $3 million related to the pavement management program.
Joe?
Just a general question, those median islands in the road, are they always ours? And the only reason why I ask is in some of my travels, I've seen a few of them, and I'm not sure if off of Palm Valley Boulevard and a couple of the others, where there's weeds filling in on those little pieces between the road, I don't know what you call them, little medians in the road. Are they always ours? And if so, I'm, next time I'll make a note of where they are, because there's some of them that look, actually, to be honest with you, pretty bad, that we probably need to put focus on, that are popping up through those little islands, so to speak, in the, in the roadway there. So are they always ours?
Yes, center medians are ours.
Okay.
So that's a good, nice to all of you, just to make up a list when you see it, not that we're going to be able to do them all at one time.
I know, but I, I just wanted to make sure, because I've seen those, and, and I'll make a list of where they are. Some of them really need some.
I've turned some in that, to the staff, and they've done a real good job. Again, we have to mourn the speed of it, because there's a lot of them.
No.
All righty. So also now, in asset management, is that $3 million in pavement management? And then there's another $0.6 million in asset replacements in miscellaneous departments, primarily police and fire, who have plans developed that aren't fully reviewed yet. But things like replacing the tasers, replacing the self-contained breathing apparatus are, are either fully or partly funded in that number. Also, small departments like the, the finance department has a need for a mailing machine that, or metering machine that's in there, so. So there's $11.7 million.
Sell it for an antique or make some money out of it?
Maybe we could. We'll surplus it, and we'll pick up the revenue in the general fund.
I think.
We'll look for the best deal on it. So if we can sell it as an antique and get a better deal, we will. But so there's $11.7 million in next year's budget associated with asset management. In terms of other items in there, again, there's temporary staffing for development-related peaks that we do kind of see that there may some, be some activity coming with this peaking and, or moving upwards in the number of building permits.
We don't mind that.
Yeah. There's $325,000 in the Development Services Department for planning, planning work, inspection work, and plan reviews. That's a temporary, there for temporary, temporary needs. There's another $175,000 in engineering for inspections and also for project management. There's a new stormwater program. There's a requirement that we make every, that we need to be protecting the water, the potential waterways. And so there's about $310,000 in the proposed budget. That's oriented towards cleanup, maintenance, and monitoring, monitoring the right, these areas. There is, on the topic of right-of-way landscaping and maintenance, there is about $306,000 in the proposed budget to address increases in the contract that we have to pay, to do landscape maintenance. There's also funding in there to add new, to add the maintenance on new right-of-way that we'll be taking responsibility for, either through our installing it or through it coming in through development. There's also some funding to do some improvements in some existing right-of-way that is not a, that, right-of-way that isn't currently developed. And then there's also funding in to do tree trimming. And then as Brian mentioned, there are, there's funding in for economic development, about $235,000 associated with retail attraction, marketing plan implementation, and business Next, next piece of the puzzle, if there's not questions on the operating budget portion of the.
Questions?
Okay. In terms of the capital improvement program, this is the area where there will probably be the most substantially impacted by when we bring in the carryovers. So as, as we move forward to tentative, you'll see the number that's associated with next year's CIP going up probably in the 30 to 35 million dollar range. But in terms of the, the 10-year CIP, we're presenting you here, this kind of the summary of the 10-year CIP. You'll notice that the 10th year and fiscal year '25, there's only a little bit of general funds in that particular year, and that's because until we develop a new infrastructure financing plan, or impact fee program, or issue bonds, or have bonds authorized, there is no new funding sources to start planning for those additional projects.
On the facility projects, when you, when you look out, you know, I'm going to say 18 and 20, I believe, isn't that the, the bonding for the potential city center? And how does that, when do you go in and budget for the operations and maintenance of that type of facility? You know, if we look at this and go, oh, we got the money to build it by, you know, 2020, but when do we start to look at, but do we have the money to, you know, take care of it? And, and when do you start to kind of plug in those numbers as you budget? When do you start looking at that?
Mayor, councilmember. What, what we'll do, when we do that five-year fund forecast, what we would do is we would also go look at the CIP and say, are there any new projects coming on in this five-year window that will have substantial operating costs that we need to begin to plan for? If there's small items, you know, if we have to add $20,000 to maintain new right-of-way landscaping, we probably wouldn't go out of our way to identify those, because we just assume, you know, this year when we did the forecast, we kind of assumed a 5% growth in expenditures, assuming that that would help cover some of those kinds of costs. But we also, in the CIP process, we ask the departments if they're proposing a new facility, they do submit an estimate of what it will cost to operate that facility. So we have that information as part of the CIP submissions. And I'm not sure if it's in our current CIP, but our intent would be to be publishing that information as well, so that as you see a project that's coming out in the future, you'd be able to see that we have estimated the operating costs. So, so for something like that, you know, we're probably still, you know, not in the, we weren't in the five-year window this year for when something like that might come into operation. But that's when you'll start seeing those. We would start calling those out as anticipated operating cost of new capital facilities.
Right. Thank you.
So, but, so, so for the, the last year is kind of a, it's not as a robust of a year, simply because the only resource we have to plan for now is general funds. Again, we, we adopt, or we plan for a funded CIP, so we only plan for what we believe we can, can fund with what's currently been approved and authorized. So yes, you are correct, there are, there is the, there is bond funding in the CIP for something like that facility. And this is the next year's portion of that CIP in a little bit more detail. And in your pack, in your materials, there's Schedule IX that summarizes, provides all the projects and, all, it lists all the projects that are involved. But essentially, again, about 50% of the CIP, similar to about 50% of the operating budget, is coming from the general fund. It's, and I'll kind of go over some of the projects here in a second. And then the balance of the CIP is made up of impact fees and then some of the revenues from the enterprise funds.
Just a general funding question on impact fees. I know impact fees can be somewhat erratic as far as trying to estimate them. Do we, when we put this in the CIP, is that money we have in the bank, are we funding one year behind? Or are we anticipating what that fund's going to be to do the project, and hopefully we won't start it till we have the money in case things start to slow down? Just a general question on how we deal with impact, because they're one of the ones that really can be hard sometimes to nail down.
Okay. Mayor, council, mayor, vice mayor, we do anticipate revenue, being, that revenue that would come in next year being available for projects next year. You may recall, several times we've come and talked to you about the CIP this year, we substantially reduced the revenue estimates for the impact fee program for this year and next year, based on the reduced level of building permit activity that was going on. You know, based on the last three months, we are experiencing permitting at a higher level than we are projecting for next year in the CIP, in the impact fees. But yes, we do plan that if, if there's a project that can move forward within the resources that we're projecting will be available, it would move forward. I think we would monitor that and, and look at the impact fee resources before we entered into a large contract relative to something that's impact fee funded.
So you feel confident once you start it, those funds will, will be there?
Yeah, there, I will, there is, if you'll recall, we have a project for a police facility that's moving forward right now. That facility will, we will, that facility and also the project that we, one of these projects where we're going to be advancing a project and using general funds to kind of buoy the impact fee until those impact fees come in. So we do have a couple projects where we know our impact fees will not come in quickly enough to actually move the project forward, but we felt that we were committed to those projects and found ways to, to cover them.
As long as you don't get too far out in front, I'm okay with it. But we just got to be careful how far out we tap into the general fund because of the impact fees. That's all.
We, we developed a new reporting, there's a CIP, there's a staff CIP committee and a staff growth committee.
Okay.
And we developed a new reporting mechanism for that staff process, where we basically, once a quarter, are reviewing, how do the impact fees look? How does it look compared to the projects we have planned? And we have discussions at that level about, can we keep moving forward? Are there any issues we need to deal with? And so that, that, that basically has been developed in the last year. We probably just got to the point to where we have it kind of firmed up as it's a, an item that we can move forward with.
That's fine. My, my only concern with impact fees, as you well know, when we had the Great Recession, the first thing that dropped off was our billing permit, billing permits drive impact fees, impact fees, capital plan, so as long as, yeah. Okay. I just want to feel we're comfortable with that, so as we kind of go forward with some of these that are funded with impact fees. That's all.
All righty. And so just here's a kind of a sampling of some of the projects, the larger or more pertinent projects that are in the CIP. In next year's CIP, there is the 1.3 million for the recreation facility. Again, this is a project that's funded over multiple years, so these funds are kind of being stored up for when the project can move forward. The completion of the current phase of the police facility is in there, and that is primarily about 2.3 million of that is impact fees in the balances, the general fund. The Saraville Portland to Van Buren project is reflected, as is the design portion of the Van Buren Street Estrella to Saraville project. Those are items that we've talked about in the last couple of meetings. There are two new traffic signals, that warranted traffic signals. And then in addition, there's the traffic signal at Yuma and Canyon Trails that is about 75% funded with developer funds. And then there's some work at the Goodyear Reclamation Facility. In the out-years.
Wally? On your cap, on your Schedule IX, I see the new potential warranted traffic signal. Is that for Estrella?
If it, Estrella, they, we have not, I, we're just listing them in the CIP as two traffic signals.
We could use that for Estrella, is what I meant.
Yeah, that is, that's, that funding is intended for the warranted signals that, as you went through the process with streets, or go through the process with streets, that would give them the funding to do two signals in addition to the Canyon Trails and Yuma Boulevard next year.
In addition to those?
In addition to the Yuma Boulevard and Canyon Trails, there would be two signals they could do.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. And you'll see there's that $42.1 million for the City Hall facility that's in a future year. We talked about that. That was raised a little bit earlier. And just the, the second phase of the police operations building is out, in and out year in the plan, as well as some work in some large projects in the water or wastewater And we, and we've mentioned before that there is a process going on with water and wastewater, looking at their rates and looking at their capital needs. That process is lagging the budget process. So this, right now, this is what we believe are the projects that are most likely So this, right now, this is what we believe are the projects that are most likely going to be moving forward as being recommended for next year. And they total about $7.2 million. So what we're proposing is that we will plan for that $7.2 million in the budget, but it will be identified as requiring council approval of a rate plan before the items could be funded. And if that should be resolved between tentative and final, we can certainly correct it before we adopt the final budget. Otherwise, it'll be set aside at a place where your action would be required before those funds could be used.
Joe?
Do we have a general idea what kind of rate increases is going to be needed for that $7.2 million?
I'm not familiar, I have not been able to follow that process so far this year. I'm not sure when it's coming forward for the council.
Deputy City Manager Bob Beckley is, will be returning from vacation, but we will be in front of council. I believe it's in June, we're working with the Water Committee now, and that will be in front of you in June.
So depending on what council approves, you may or may not have enough money for the $7.2, I'm guessing, right?
Correct.
Be a correct statement?
This is what we're, yeah, this is what's being talked about for next year. So I bet it will be subject to council approval. We're putting in the budget with that assumption, and could that change? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it's not necessarily saying that that $7.2 million would be directly funded off of the rate, the current revenue. It may be debt, it might be proposed debt financing and those types of things as they develop that full capital program.
Okay. Would be what, water debt type of financing?
Yeah, the financing will be talked about by the Finance Department. Larry, I didn't know if you may want to have any input on that?
Absolutely.
Our Finance Director?
The only reason why I ask, I just want to make sure we spent all that time getting the property tax and the GOs and all of that off of, off the books, onto the rates. Just want to make sure that whatever we do to finance the debt, we don't cross back over that barrier, at least from my perspective.
Yeah. First on the date, June 15th is the date that this is expected in a work session to come to you. And in the whole process, this next week, the committee is going to start to get some of these numbers, and then the next two weeks. Specifically on the financing, the term assumption is actually pretty light. I mean, it's, one of the givens of it is that any debt financing would be funded by those rates.
Okay. That's my end. Thank you.
All righty.
Go ahead.
Okay. If there's no questions on CIP, further questions on CIP, we can move on. Okay. Debt service, the assumption for debt service, given that we just talked a little bit about the potential for water debt, there's no new debt issuance assumed in this debt service schedule. This is just what's currently programmed for debt that we have already issued. Even if the council were to move to approve some kind of debt financing for water projects next year or wastewater projects, the chance that there would be any debt service next year would be slim. So that, you know, this is fairly firm numbers that we have here. The last thing I wanted to do is kind of walk you through the budget policies and just highlight a couple of them in terms of what has led us to develop this budget. There's a lot of words on these slides, I'm just going to pick out a few items just to highlight. We started off, when we talked about that one pie chart, that we want to make sure that operating, ongoing costs are funded with ongoing resources, and so we demonstrated that earlier. There will be, as you asked, there will be a three-month contingency included in the budget that gets adopted. We're estimating that might go up about $300,000 based on the operating budget that's being proposed. I thought I'd jump down to, and that, you'll see that the, one of them is that the enterprise funds should be self-sufficient, and that is what we've continued to assume. And in fact, they pay for their share of the cost of the general government that supports them. The next, there's a couple of items, there's one that's crossed out, and then there's two new ones proposed in blue. And these are items that are associated with the changes we're making relative to asset management. We had a policy that said that replacement of equipment would be funded through the depreciation replacement reserves. With the introduction of the asset management approach, we've just proposed some new policies, or one that asset management reserves will be established and funded and used to replace and preserve general fund assets consistent with the department plans. And so there will have to be a plan to use it as asset management and have a reserve set up for it. We'll continue with this process to work with the departments that we haven't quite finished the process with.
And I'd like just kudos to the council for that because that was brought up and really a good decision-making council.
Okay. And then the other ones is that enterprise fund asset management requirements will be incorporated into the multi-year forecasting and plans for those, for those funds. So for example, when we prepared a multi-year forecast for water and for wastewater to support the process that's going on now with the consultants, we included in there the forecast for their vehicle replacements that the fleet, the fleet area determined would be appropriate. And we included the forecast for their technology replacements as well. So that's how we will keep on top of the enterprise funds providing for the replacement of their assets as well. Just go through, and we haven't issued any new debt or made any changes to debt, so the policies here remain. Although there, I would point out that one of the, there are the, one of the policies here is that the combined property tax rate, when it reaches $1.60, that would be the point at which we would consider issuing new bonds, so something like that, that project that's out there. It's there in the year we think we may be able to achieve this goal.
Reading for that.
But it, but it will move.
Participation.
Yeah, so it'll, we'll monitor that and see how the forecasts change and if we need to move that project or not. And the other thing, other pertinent item here is that we are levying the primary at the maximum allowed, and that's consistent with this, with the policies here. In terms of some additional budget policies, there, I'd call out here that the, you know, that we, their annual budget for community relations funding has not changed, so it's remaining consistent with that compliance item there. And we have been doing, planning for, doing financial forecasting and those types of things. And of course, we come to council with, to approve any budget transfers that meet the criteria. And if the contingency were to be used, the council would be asked to do that. Terms of revenue policies, staff did review the user fees this year. They plan, the policy calls for those to be reviewed every three to five years. And as you know, the development fees were reviewed last year, so we're a few years away from potentially moving forward with another review of those items. And we talked earlier, the middle one in the capital budgeting policy is that departments should be estimating the operating impacts of the CIP over the next three to five years. As I identified, we requested that they submit the estimated operating costs of the projects through the CIP process. And where those items are material, we would be building those into long-range forecasts as well. Anything on the policies, or?
Vice Mayor?
Just a general comment. I think the, one of the key reasons from an organizational standpoint, and what I mean by organization, I mean staff, city council, the council you've got sitting up here. I believe we're in a really sound financial, number one, policy and sound position is because of these policies. I mean, I don't know if, and again, I'm not going to talk about other cities, but I think as a whole, we've done a very good job with the, working with staff and with city council coming up with policies, number one, that set aside money to ensure that we don't have to dip into our reserves for our capital replacement. We've been forward-thinking when it comes to the debt service, when it comes to the, to the ballpark. And every policy that you have down here, whether it's holding true to our enterprise fund and make sure that their fees cover it, so we have fairness on who's getting, who's paying for what, I think are all great. And that's why we are where we are. So I think overall, there needs to be a tip of the hat for the whole organization. Staff's done a fantastic job. I think as a council, we helped lay some of the groundwork as far as the actual policies. And I appreciate all the effort out there because, to me, this says it with these policies what you just had, is why we are where we are, and that we stick to these policies and as we move forward. So again, thank you, staff. Really appreciate all the effort that you put into it. And to me, this is what makes me proud, is when I see that and how much we're in 100% compliance with this. So thank you.
I think that the, we can echo that with all the council members, that I've sensed that around the table. I could be wrong, but I sense that that's how we all feel. So congratulations. It is a real coup for everybody, and it really, it does set the standard for the West Valley. So it's a great one.
Wonderful. And then just the last thing I have is the rest of the calendar. Brian kind of already covered that, but just to remind you again, we'll do a public forum on Wednesday. If you'd like another discussion of the draft budget, we can come back next Monday. And then we move into the basic steps of adopting.
I don't see anyone, don't worry, we're not. I don't, I don't see anybody getting excited to come back.
Mayor, I just like the week so that if I have any questions, I can go to staff and get it clarified. I don't think I need another...
You can do that at any time.
I know, but, but rather than having...
Means to have a meeting?
Yeah, than to have another meeting. I think they've done a wonderful job explaining it to us, and I've saved every piece of paper.
I don't think you have consensus on that one.
Oh...
She doesn't want a meeting.
Oh, I don't want a meeting.
You don't want a meeting, I thought you wanted a meeting.
No!
Separately.
I'm going on my own. I don't want another meeting.
That's what I was trying to clarify.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
No, no, not another meeting.
And that's nice for all of us. Everybody has that ability to do that so they can feel pretty secure when they do the final vote. Yes.
Yeah, I know Wally really wants to come back to 11 o'clock again.
I know, I know.
I want to thank you as well. And when we go before the public, I think one thing, we were talking about the positions and stuff, that seems to be, the public needs to realize, and I think if we could tie in there our satisfaction surveys too when you give the presentation, because I think it's really important to see we've had, even during the recession, with really not adding people and growing population, we have had a high satisfaction of our citizens. So they like the job people are doing. So I think that's important to tie into, but I want to thank the staff because this is very detailed. And I'm good with no more meetings.
But thank you for offering.
Joanne?
Sorry, I didn't get that. Lois is talking over here to us.
Well, I didn't know why she was talking to me. I just closed her up.
I, you know, I would like to say the detail here, it's funny how different managers and different staffs put different budgets together. And I thought that this was a good detailed description of things because there's, I know that there's a fine line that you have of keeping us at a higher level and then also, you know, showing what's going on. And so I think that there is, this is the level that I think that we need, this is the level that I think that our, our public needs to see. I think there's, there's items in here that would probably make everyone happy because I've seen them where we were, quite frankly, not showing enough. And, and this really may make people go, oh, what's that? What's that? You know, I mean, it causes, you know, people to ask questions, but, but there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, that's, that's what transparency is about. But it's also, I think, been, for me, it's been presented in a way that is very understandable. And, and I have nothing, you know, to say against any of that. I think that's been done very well.
I think what's happened, I think that through this whole process, not just this year, but the previous year...
Many years.
We've, we've talked to our, our finance department over and over that you have to make this language simple, and you have to put it together, you know, put it in so it's understandable. And I think we've hit that point now for so long that, that there were a lot of questions, even on our part. So I think, I really do think the presentations speak for themselves now. And I, you know, I just can't imagine we get negativity on this, on this budget and the way it was presented, so. Pardon me?
You still will, but that's okay.
Yeah, well, we will, but good job anyway, so. This, is there anything else? Because we have finished with this presentation, and that's all we had in the schedule tonight. So do you have anything that, for us? I think all of us, I just want to mention, are we at this point now where I can mention something? We're done, okay? I just want to mention geared for growth. I don't want to leave it to go another week, but, but you can still talk about it in a week, okay? It was fantastic. It was the most well-organized, well-presented. I'm getting nothing but positive feedbacks on it because it was class. It was classic. And, and the room looked good, the food was good, the speakers were good, and we had so many people attend from all over the valley. I can't, but I just know we're going to get some other progress for our city from that, from the number of people that were there, because there were a lot of developers there, a lot of business people there. And the one, the one fault I have, and I don't know if you're in this, is that, you know, we hear the things over and over and over again here, okay? So when we go out, someone says, how's Goodyear going? Oh, everything's good in Goodyear. You know what I mean? So we don't actually take this information out and say, well, you asked me, so I'm going to tell you. And so I'm going to start carrying a little card with me, okay? So when I'm out there and somebody asks that question, oh, I'm so glad you asked. Let me tell you what we're doing. It's just that we always are interested in our residents knowing everything, but really, if we want to grow and grow the right way, we need to let the entire Maricopa County know what we're doing, so. Yes, Joanne?
And actually, on that, and you're right, it was a fabulous event, and I think I, you know, I had many people come up to me. They wanted more. I mean, it certainly could have gone on for another half hour of information. People wanted, they were, they were, you know, engaged and happy about that. And this may be one of those things that, we haven't had our, our council talking points updated in quite a while, and that might be something that, you know, back to your little, your point of the card, I think that's something, there's a lot of things that could be added to that. I just wanted to add since when we get together next week, is that this is National Small Business Week. And so I just want to say, you know, to all of our small businesses out there that go with glory. And we're, and we're behind you, and, you know, we want to make things here in our city going well for our small business and across our nation. And so, you know, kudos to all them.
Good. Anybody else? Yes, Wally?
Well, I just want to share, last week I was elected to the Board of Directors of the Community Information and Referral Board, which administers the 2-1-1 in Arizona. So I'm really thrilled to be representing Goodyear somewhere else in the valley.
We are proud of that.
Thank you.
So congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, Cheryl Lynn?
I would just like to issue an invitation to anyone who's interested in the growth of the Southwest London Closet. We're having a open house celebration event at the completion of our new parking lot. I guess I've been mistaken, I found out today that that building was built in the '60s, not in the '70s. So therefore, that parking lot was even older than we thought. So anyway, 9 o'clock Thursday morning, that would be the 7th, and anyone interested in our progress is welcome to come.
I'll be there. Anything else? Well, then, the next meeting?
Mayor, do I have a couple of things?
Yes.
If allowed.
You're allowed.
It was a, yeah. And actually, you talked about Small Business Week, had a couple of other things. If you look over to the, my left, it is a 46 Annual Municipal Clerks Week, all week long, May 3rd through the 9th. And it's the clerks throughout the U.S., Canada, and 15 other countries actually celebrated during the week. So one of the things they've done, they set up a table in our lobby at City Hall with information about their office, and allows our public to complete a survey and then our chance to win a new Lamborghini or maybe, no, no, just a simple gift card.
Where is this?
Just seeing if you're listening. No. Seriously, a gift card, but just to try and...
Or a Lamborghini.
Yeah, I don't think so. But, you know, we love our city clerk's office, they, you know, they keep us on task, they prepare the agendas, just a lot of work they do behind the scenes. So it's a great week to recognize that. Personally, I'd like to recognize Maureen and her team of Sue, Janet, Jean, Byron, and Jenny for all they do behind the scenes. So thank you. And next week, I think it's just like recognition time of the year, I don't know. National Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week.
Ooh, nice.
So this goes back to John F. Kennedy in 1962, where he actually established a proclamation designating May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And the week, whatever that falls on, that entire week then is that celebration. According to concerns of police survivors, cops, about 140 to 160 officers are killed in the line of duty each year, and their families and coworkers are left to cope with a tragic loss. So each year, the Fraternal Order of Police and its auxiliary organizes a national memorial service on that day, drawing thousands of people from many parts of the United States. So the service is followed by placement of memorial wreath at the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And on this day, it's reminded all of us to be vigilant against and, and be looking at crime that may happen, and to turn that in. One of the things that's, I think, special about this year is we have Goodyear Police Sergeant Joe Pacello and Goodyear Police Officer Jamie Benker are riding with Team Arizona in the 2015 Police Unity Tour, which is scheduled May 9th through May 12th.
That's great.
And the unity tour is a 250-mile bicycle ride, beginning in Portsmouth, Virginia, and ending at the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in DC. And it's really, again, to raise awareness for those that have died in the line of duty. But it's, it's just terrific that we have a couple of our, our folks that are doing that. So as part of their participation, they each are required to raise $2,000 to be allowed to participate in, in the ride. And since 1997, this unity tour has raised $16 million for the memorial fund for the families. So they're included in a group of 22 bicyclists participating in the Team Arizona, so shout out to them as well. And then the other thing is guns and hoses, they had their first alarm golf tournament this past weekend, and their fifth annual. So it was over at the Wigwam. The sponsors were Cancer Treatment Centers of America with Paradise Rebar, McLean's, and FX Tactical as additional sponsors. We had 266 golfers there. I understand it was a six and a half hour round.
Wow. On a hot day.
But, but it raised over $15,000 between the two charities, and, and that's incredible. So, and the last point on this is, their major recipients of those charity funds are officers, firefighters killed or injured throughout the year. Sponsorship for child burn victims to attend burn camp, and Phoenix Children's Southwest Hospital, Muscular Dystrophy Association, and in the Arizona 100 Club. So a lot of, a lot of goods going out there, and a special thanks to those folks that are, that organized it as well as supported it. So thank you, that's all I have.
Yes, Wally?
I want to thank the Goodyear Police Department and the Goodyear Fire Department for assisting a family that was in a horrific car accident on Friday evening, and the, the accident victim happens to be the son of one of my closest friends, but I was at the hospital again this morning, and the family asked me to please thank the first responders, the rescue crews, the fire department, because they had to use the jaws of life to extract him. And if we had not had a trauma center in Goodyear, I don't know that the results would have been as good as they are, even though they're bad, because he would have had to been transported to St. Joseph's.